Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting on this Monday, April the 5th, 2021, approximately 7:09 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call the robe, please?
Yes, I see Brown, Addison, Ralph Maker.
Here.
How Addison and.
Here.
And Terry.
Here.
And Mr. Forum.
Thank you very much. Before I ask my brother Miller to come and do the prayer tonight, I'd like to just say, I know there's a lot of sickness and a lot of issues in our community that need prayers. And two, in particular, I'd like to mention just before we get started, and that's the family of Megan Whitson, longtime, very beloved teacher librarian at school, passed away, and I just pray to be with her family. And also, our former officer, police officer Josh Morton is in hospital, and it's very, very serious. So, with that being said, I would ask you to stand, please. And brother Miller, if you'll come forward and lead us from assembly, first, Assembly Governor, we'll leave some prayer called by our pledge, led by Chief Sturrock.
We'd like to have one announcement, if I can, and that is the National Day of Prayer. It's May the 6th at the courthouse. We couldn't do that last year. We're going to do it this year. And if you can be there, it starts at 12 noon until 12:30. I think it'd be, it's going to be a great time. We certainly need word at once. Let's pray. Father, we just thank you so much for your grace and love and mercy. While we're living in troubled times, chaos is in our country, Lord, with the mass murders and riots and the total disunity that we are experiencing right now. Thank God, we call upon you for whatever needs we have. And we know, Lord, we pray this evening for Greenwood. This is a good city to live, it's a great city to live in. Lord, I know that there has to be rules and regulations to live by, and this is the council meeting, Lord, with several different things that they need to talk about. And I pray, Lord, that you'll give them the wisdom that they need, because you have the wisdom that we need in order to be able to lead and to guide this great city in the direction you want it to go. And I do also pray, Lord, for that many that are sick. We know, according to what your word says, you are the Lord God who heals us. So, we just pray, Lord, upon those right now, that you will release your healing power upon them. May they experience the presence of God, knowing that you are touching and healing them. And Father, we're going to give you thanks and praise for all that's accomplished. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May you see. At this time, I would ask for approval of the minutes for the March 1st Greenwood Council meeting.
I think we should have the board read the minutes.
That's a good idea. We're going to have the secretary to read the minutes this evening, mainly because my speech is in there. It addresses its entirety.
Yeah, it's the city address. It's not true, but I appreciate that.
I made a motion to approve.
A second. A motion, a second to approve, man.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Your thing?
Yes.
And your.
Yes.
Thank you. No particular recognitions or acknowledgements this evening, other than we appreciate everybody being here. And we're again acknowledging that no one's wearing a mask, and if you need to and feel that you need to point to, that's absolutely fine. But we're kind of back to some normalcy. We'll see how it goes. Thank you, Drew, for being here, as always. Committee reports. I know Kenny has issued one. I read it and set up a search flag.
Once again, and I'll probably do this monthly, thanking y'all for that 24,000. I now understand how my wife feels when I tell her she's over budget to quit spending, because we spent that 24, spent another 12, and still, well, as far as I can go. But what's on here, not on here is, of course, all the lights and gyms will be redone. We also have the floor going to be redone this Friday. That needs to be done. We got a lot of high school junior high girls and boys that like to come out there and practice and everything, so we're trying to get them in there. But weather has pushed us so far back that it looks like everything's going to be done in one week, which I hope so. So, again, just thank y'all. It's made a huge difference. And we're looking at even trying to do some more upgrades later on this year, if the funds are available, of course. So, but does anybody have any questions? Again, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Ken. I appreciate what you do. SRCA, no, Lisa's not here this evening, but yet, you do have a report from those folks. Any questions or anything about that? If you have any later, as always, you can reach Danielle or myself, and we'll get you an answer. Parks Commission also has issued a report. Phil Steen's here.
The council, Mary, attorney, the reports are in your folder. Quite a bit of things going on, things that we've accomplished. The train is down at the city lake. Looks fantastic. We'll have to look. We put the approval on this May. Hopefully, the park him up, stop working. You have camp recancelling that goes through at the city lake. It's part of the public health, as we have cannot put one there. It's too close for water. The town square curving is all done. There'll be space for 160 blacks as the, as ones fill up over the next couple of years. We did sit down, had a meeting with Michael John, a teacher, Bell Park Division. Found some problems, so we're revisiting it. Four of the minds of the park have been refaced. And there'll be a hell of a lot going on as far as sidewalks, trail lighting, et cetera. All of them works, all of them approved and permitted. Any questions?
I'm going to commend Tammy on trying to get on that bathroom at the city lake to the tri park. We were really disappointed that you there can't be one of us there. But thanks for what you did.
It can be, but it would be up at Mike McAllister's house, that far away.
It'd be.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Or we saw our commission. Don't see Mr. Bailey here. Did that give a report? I guess they're not. I don't see one. There it is. Okay. Again, any questions there? Let us know. We'll give you an answer. We are at the Assistant Forum portion. No one has signed up this evening, so we'll move on from that. My next report, Mr. Marshall.
Can have it received via email. Shouldn't have it electronically. So, I'm just going to give a couple of the highlights. The city sales and use tax remit for the month of March, put us month over previous year, same month, 24.1% for the month. Cumulatively for the entire year so far, for the first three months, we're up 18.8%. That's 8.8% more than what was budgeted, that we budgeted 10% growth. So, 18.8, it's 8.8% above where we anticipated it being. Those numbers are going up. It was 14, 18, and now 24. Our cumulative went from 14 to 8.8. City sales and county sales tax, same month, March over March of 2020, was 15.6% increase. And for a cumulative first three months, it's 10.8%. Now, if you remember, we budgeted 5.6%, so we're 5.2% above budget for the county sales tax. First quarter is a, I'm a little happy about that, but I'm still cautiously optimistic for the next three months.
Do you think that's because of maybe some of the things being lifted from the federal restrictions that are getting out?
No, that's December of January. It's not, never getting out. So, this year, 2021, next quarter's going to tell us what's going to happen.
So, why do you think such injuries, all of this?
Yeah. That was the, that was the holiday spend that rolled in.
But over, over, you said, from compared to last year, that's a pretty good jump.
It is. It certainly is. But then to go back to what was saying before, and that is a lot of people shop, let their fingers go to shop. Yeah. We got a 9% jump of that. And remember, we're 8.8% up. We budgeted 10, so 9% was pretty hefty, and that number could be going up. I'd have to see if we can get some statistics on exactly what's coming in from online, so to speak. But I'm, I'm pretty happy with it.
Yeah, it's been trending.
It is. It's good. Like I said, I'm cautiously optimistic. 2021, second quarter ought to be a good tale, as to whether that's going to continue. County this way, I'm kind of pleasantly surprised. The trend that we saw early showed that we were kind of declining and hitting where we had originally budgeted at 5%. The numbers were, I'm pleasantly surprised with county. Of course, we're picking up a piece of the pie of all contributors in the county because it's poorly managed. If you go to the last page of the consolidated financials that are given there, which shows every department and every cost center for the city's profit and loss, or surplus and deficit. I just wanted to point out that the total revenues for the first three months is $3,005, 3,052,6908, to be exact. We budgeted for the year 18,465,627 in revenue. That is 19% of our budgets collected so far in revenue for the first three months. If everything came in equally, you would expect that number to be around 25%. But all our revenue doesn't come in every month exactly the same. So, in the first quarter, we had a 19% collections of our budgeted revenues. The expenses, 3, 46,461. We budgeted 21 million, which does put you at a budgeted deficit of 2.5 million. But right now, for the first three months, we're about a half a million, just slightly under a half a million up surplus. So, the expenses of 3 million against the 21 million is 14% of our budgeted expenses. Now, if you wanted to look at what portion of that is operating expense that's contributing to that versus what portion is capital related? The operating, the operational budget deficit is about 228,000 of that 2.5 million. So, you're looking at a carryover as we budgeted a 2.3 million on the capital side. So, the operational deficit, the budgeted operational deficit is 228,000, quarter million. 2,300 is your capital amount. So, I wanted to show you a little bit more in a graph. There is a graph in there that shows you what we have done since 2018 in our fund balance. The next page that I'm talking about is the cash flow. And for the month of March, we had an increase in cash of 129,000, bringing us for the first quarter, the increase of $367,000, which shows that we end, we're right now at 13,7, 13,700,000 in all funds to the city. We budgeted 1231, 2021 to end the year with 9,009. We have 4 million of that fund decrease coming from capital related. 2.3 is a carryover from the previous year that we didn't get to due to curtailing of some of the projects due to COVID. But if you look at the graph that I presented, it's a, it shows the steady increase in our cash funds from 2018, January through current. We have increased, we started 2018 at roughly around, right at $10 billion. We have increased our cash funds 33% since 2018. And I'd like to say, hey, that's great. I came here in 2017, the last three months, and we've increased our cash by 33%. Great. Except, if you look at the numbers that are below that, and that's where we said we would end the years with, as far as our fund balance, due to committed projects. We were supposed to end the year in 2020 at 9,008. We're supposed to end 2021 at 10,005, 10,008, excuse me, 10,008. Right now, we're at 13,7. So, you could look at it another way and say that some of these projects that are still pending are not yet occurring to cost or be created. That's something to watch. That increase has a positive and a negative to it. If you abandon committed projects, those are projects that we put in the budget, the public has knowledge of. So, you have to be cautious of that. Why aren't these projects getting done? Where are we on these projects? That emphasis, that emphasis comes when we do the quarterly budget reviews, because that's when we start asking that question. Based on this type of a graph, where you say, is this money that's growing in our fund balance due to a fact, the fact that we're collecting a lot more revenue that was uncommitted, or is it due to the fact that we're curtailing our operational expense, or is it projects that aren't getting done on a capital related side? So, when we start sitting down and looking at a quarterly budget review, that's, that's how we're going to look at it. We'll look at what did we say we were going to do? Where are we on those projects? And are we abandoning, abandoning it, or are we pushing some of that cost into future years? What's behind that growth?
Well, as long as the numbers were, as long as we're not at the nine man number in the projects pocket, as long as they can cash, there's a cover what we have left to, you know what I'm saying?
We would be having a whole different talk if we were below the nine number. Correct. Absolutely. That would be, we're spending money and the project's still in progress. But that could be that we missed projections in our revenue streams, and we had a major downfall on revenue side. But that's not what's happening. Our revenue numbers are good. Previous revenues were off budget by about 1.3%. We hit revenue projections pretty close. Last year, we ended up with that, we would have taken a deficit side on the revenue stream last year, but we got the COVID relief, the CARES relief, and that was 300 and some thousand dollars. So, that, that put us right at budget. So, we were able to recoup a lot of that. That, so it's not the revenue side that's causing it. It's more, and I can go down and show you the numbers, it's more the capital side that's, those projects still aren't being done. And it is only the first quarter, so. Lot will pick up during the summer months, when it's a lot better, nicer weather instead of raining and COVID.
I would say if it's a project that's over a year, two years, we're still waiting, we can probably have a little fire size and send us get that going. I understand COVID year kind of throws everything off, but I guess my, I'll have an extra cash flow, but we've got stuff we can be getting done out there.
And then the A and P revenue, that's the other thing that I showed you. I told you we're going to be getting these graphs as well. For March, same period this year over last year, we're up 1.75% in A and P collection. For the year cumulative, we're up 15.82%. That is 7.82% above what we budgeted. We budgeted a growth of 8%. So, the collections on the AP side, which is more indicative of here and now, was still tracking very, very favorable.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. I thought you were painting a picture as you were here. Think it was going to be good. That's where you're headed. Well, I go, gee.
Well, that goes to us.
We appreciate your work, Tom. Thank you. Where am I? Agenda additions. We do have one this evening, so we'll call it number seven. The council approves that this Parks Department is going to seek a resolution for federal aid for a bridge, for the bridge.
Yeah, Parks. To approve, to authorize a grant and.
Your word.
You know, I always got something.
I know. My wording's never quite.
Yeah, no, it's all right.
Supposed to be. All right. Counsel okay with that?
Chief Bryan, number one yours.
He's going to take a lot of full leave. Is that correct?
Yep.
Correct.
Well.
Well, actually, we're never on the agenda, so.
Do you want me to add it to the next month's agenda?
Yeah.
Can you tell it?
Yeah, if you can figure it out, that would be actually beautiful. Thank you. I love the last thing. Top real quick.
I mean, are you able to focus in over there? The apartment looked up with this lingering?
Yeah, I just have four cabins.
Four captains. Good. Good. Okay. Number one, old business is finance budget amendment resolution to remove council raises from 2021 budget.
We had this conversation where there was some, some concern about whether or not the council was going to accept the increase that was put into the budget, because it is a salary related or a fee related item to cover ourselves for the audit, because they do look at the salaries to end or the rate of remuneration to the city council. If we don't have anything that says that you are foregoing that, then they would ask us to make it, make it, because it's in the budget. It was approved when you approved the budget. So, if you are not wanting that, I need this resolution that's here to be specifically voted on and approved, telling us you're rescinding that out of the budget. You're adjusting the budget by that to reduce it.
Make a motion to adopt that resolution.
Second. Motion, a second to the top. Any discussion?
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
And Mr.?
He is.
And Mary.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Parks Department Freedom Fest Authorization Confirmation. Brian, you want?
I can. I will. I just wanted to bring to your attention that I would like to have a Freedom Fest this year. And I have begun the planning already, but I wanted to make sure that I had the blessing to go forward barring any other outbreaks of the virus or any other mandates that were handed down from the government or the state, or I guess the governor not allowing us to do so. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were good with it.
The Parks Commission asked it.
Yes.
They approved it at the reading upon y'all's approval.
Absolutely.
No.
A motion, a second.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
I know you would have, I would have too.
I had a nice, all the clocks.
Yes, the clocks, the entertainment schedule.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Simple.
The entertainment schedule will be as follows. We will have a bluegrass gospel band first in the morning. Then we will be followed by another Christian group from here locally. And then we will have Mr. Capichet and his Raining Rations about middle ways of the day. And the street circus that comes, that walks around, so they're going to do two performances in front of stage. Then we will have Jay and Marge's. And we will have the clocks.
Red test.
Good deal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else that thinks something that you would like for me to add? Feel free to call or let me know.
She's already turned me down. Fill in it. I don't get it. If you mean to the entertainment yet.
No, no. Anything else you'd like to have at Freedom Fest, we can, we can accommodate.
Total races, work on any.
Total races.
Does the Sonic Lunch Pancake breakfast, breakfast get put in the advertising rhetoric every year?
I mean, we can put it on our page. I mean, they, they're not with us, so, I mean, but somebody always asks me, and we always throw it in there. I mean, you know.
I think one, one year, we had it on our, on just a flyer, just listed it.
Yeah.
I didn't know there's, I, I've never seen the list of what all's going on throughout the town.
Sure. There's always somebody that asks me to plug it, so I always, you know, plug it on our Facebook page or however we.
I'd appreciate it. I'm the grand pool wall this year.
Well, well, absolutely, man. We will get that done for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, he did. Drew, how are you?
I agree. It's amazing.
Number three of new business is the Councilman, Danny Daniel, has an ordinance.
I know that Sonny probably has more to after this. I think Sonny's been working on this. This, we talked about it last month, and several people said, you know, Lance brought it up. I think the thing that, well, I've got a lot of frustration with this, but if you look on the third page, section five B, and again, Sonny, I don't think we're going to fix this right this minute. My suggestion, or my question or something is, you know, no person shall conduct grading that was altered in there before the night, or blah, blah, blah. I think we need to put something in there on this that unless it's directly associated with a permitted construction plan. If you're going to build tractor supply, obviously, you're going to move dirt. There's going to be a lot of work done and so forth. We get that. There's a timeline associated to it generally. There's a, someone has engineered, submitted a plan. There's something about all that that's legitimate, other than we're going to dig up side of hill. I don't know where we went wrong, you know, myself included. We went, we had this ordinance several years ago, and it was prompted by the rock quarry over here. And then we were, was it last month, we heard that some of that got repealed. This, I guess, repealed some of that. But I think, I mean, I don't know. You guys.
What is your question?
I mean, everything that you've said so far has been done, so I don't know what
the question is on the sort of.
Well, I think, you know.
Has it been engineered?
When this first came up.
It's been engineered.
When this first came up, just a minute.
Okay.
I think all of us, we're concerned that we're going to wind up with the same thing we got in.
Same thing we got what?
Out at 71.
That's not our.
Where we're, you know, just don't let that happen. And there it is. You know, I mean, it was, we talked about it. If somebody comes in, digs up the side of the hill, we can't put it back. There's no amount of money that we can put that back like God made. And, you know, I don't, I mean, but this project out there, what's he planning to build?
He's planning, the end result will be a strip shopping center similar to the AT&amp;T store, the Dollar Tree exercise area out further on campus.
Has he had a, I mean, have you seen that, like a drawing, an engineered architectural or?
I've seen a conceptual drawing, yes.
But going to happen with all that?
I've seen the conceptual drawing.
I mean, I don't know. I'm not saying I got all the answers. I'm just saying, I mean, I don't like it. I know there's a lot of other people in town that don't like it. You know that as well. I mean, I'm just.
Well, yeah, this project's been going on since 2018. Since 2018, really, there has not been anybody come into my office and say, what's going on there? You know, do we have this? Do we have that? There's not been anybody questioning that. Mr. Goldstein probably the first one that I communicated, sure, part of Facebook, covered what, what was going on, where we were on this. Everything that is in the ordinance, remember? Uh, remember this started with two thousand and eighteen with the ordinance, uh, that was, uh, uh.
Seven oh seven.
And that was eighteen twenty-four. That's the ordinance that started that. Uh, Mayor and I, Hunter, have watched this pro- uh, progress through where it is now. He is, uh, uh, he goes under, uh, we look at it every six months. His permit is only good for six months. We, he comes in, we look at the progress that he's made. If it's made according to this ordinance, then we extend the permit. He has bonded, he's got it. We, Ron Bricksy took this ordinance, nineteen forty-one oh one, and he checked off every box on this and provided us with everything that this ordinance requires. The only thing that you can put on this ordinance that would change anything out there is to put a, "I don't like it" on there. And I think that would get us in court. Do I like the project out there the way it looked? No, absolutely not. But I remember when phase two of Forest Hills was going over there, people didn't like that either. They thought it would look terrible. And Ken Gish cleared off the mountain over there on, uh, Mount Harmon. People didn't like that either. I mean, construction does not look pretty when it starts. Uh, tractor supply, they look pretty. Waffle House, they look pretty. This is a long range project that we have to monitor according to our ordinances. This has been approved and inspected by A D Q, uh, on a average of every sixty days. We have him in here on an average of every six months. And when the top of the hill got blown away, I put a stopper corridoring. We had him in here, Mayor and I sat down and took, zoomed and basically said, what the hell is going on here? And he told us, he says he talked to A D Q about his program, which they had approved, and he was going to clear off this, the top of that hill for the contour. And their suggestion to him was to lay the trees an uneven pattern so that it would not erode the hill. That's the reason why it looked like that.
And so, you know, and I'm not accusing you of anything at all. I feel that.
It sounded to me like, but you said, where did we go wrong? I mean, we, how did we go wrong when we followed the ordinance to the letter?
Well, my concern, you know, and I think it's the same that a lot of people have, you know. Boy had great intentions at the rock quarry, you know. Everybody had great intentions. Everybody had a plan and it didn't follow through or it fell apart for whatever reason, you know.
And those like that.
And just like this, I mean, I think that's what prompted, you know, hey, let's talk about this.
You remember the pushback?
The top of the hill wasn't part of the plan.
You remember the pushback that Fort Smith died on Cardigan?
Oh, yeah.
The people that complained about how ugly it was, what it was gonna do to that part of the city, visible from the, from the, uh, freeway? And you can't get in there now. The same people that were complaining about it use it all the time. Construction looks bad when it starts. It's the finished product.
I'm not worried about construction and the, and the end result if we, if we make it to the end result.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. That's what I'm shooting for, is the end result. And there is no guarantee that that will happen.
So, I mean, I guess that's my only concern, Sonny, is if somebody walks in here, do, is what we have, say, you've gotta have a plan, you gotta hand me a copy of the plan, we gotta prove it, you know.
Everything this, this.
Which, you know, we said, yeah, he had a plan, but then he scraped the top of the hill off and we didn't know he was gonna do it.
But, you know, we didn't know he was gonna do it in that manner. We've got a contour, an engineered contour showing the face of that mountain, and it follows this ordinance to the letter. When it's finished, we'll be according to this ordinance. And that's all we can ask you to do. I can't ask you to do more than that, or I can tell him, you can't do that just because I don't want you to do that. I mean, that's.
May I interject a second? I think the very first statement you made is a very true statement. It's something the council should consider. And I don't know that you can attach it to something after it's already, I think, I don't know that you can.
Add to that project.
I'm pretty sure you can't. And, and I was in the room when we did exactly what he said, and it's, it wasn't pleasant. Hunter was in there, but, so we keep, we're keeping him accountable. My answer to your, you didn't ask me, but my answer to that is, Daniel, that we, this, we're holding him accountable to this ordinance. We do not, we do not have engineered plans of the construction of buildings or anything. And, and I don't think, I don't know that that's not a bad idea to have that in future to, to attach. I think you use the word attached to it or have something to say. Because all, all we know and what we have is what he's, as far as the grading part of it, right? I mean, that, what we, and that's, that's what we're holding him accountable to. When he gets through with it.
Well, I tell me.
I agree, we can't re- you know, we can't retroactively go.
We can ask somebody for, for construction plans for the end, or we can ask for a conceptual plan, which we have. We have a conceptual plan of this, that there's going to be a, a strip shopping center up there with an entrance and an exit, uh, that goes in and out around, uh, Russ's, uh, business down there. That, you know, that's all you can ask for a developer at this point. It's like, like I said, comparing it to, uh, uh, you know, a housing development. They show you plaques and they show you where houses are gonna be built. But until they start building that building, that house, we don't see construction plans. So all we can see is the conceptual part of building a subdivision.
Why could we not require this plat from somebody doing that, though? I mean, like, show me a plat of this strip you're gonna build. Where's the bridge gonna be? How long's it gonna be?
I think we can, I think we can.
I mean, I, I know we can on, on Hartley.
That's, that's, I think we should be able to.
I mean, we, we have engineered plans.
I mean, if somebody comes in, I'm sorry, I'm trying to stop. If somebody comes in looking at a flat piece of property, any flat piece of property that's there, and they're not gonna do what he's doing. All they have to do is start rebuilding, but they gotta level a little bit. So obviously that is what we, he asked for. This one, however, is this first and then, but in, in the, to comment, just not to, you know, we know, we all know there's scars all over, all over the city. And I would say, and I'm not throwing the blame anywhere, really, I'm trying not to, but that, this was not followed during the procedure of those scars.
We haven't, we haven't had a project in this town that is monitored as close as this one is monitored since I lived. Hunter's out there, oh, not daily, but staying here. And he's communicating with, uh, with, uh, ever other day or so, uh, you know, we, we talked to the engineers, uh, A D Q, I talked to A D Q. They tell me when they're going to inspect, they tell me if there's, if they come across something that they, that they're gonna, you know, write a warning on or, or whatever. And they are, they have not had any issues. He's following A D Q, where it says in here that we need engineer drawings. We've got, it says in here.
He hasn't given us any timeline.
The, the estimated time, I think, is, uh, August of twenty twenty-one, is that right? But if it's, you know, if it's at a point there that we will look at either extending it, you know, depending on where is that? You know, at this point, where would you stop? You know, as long as he's making headway. Because again, as you said, we can't go back. All we can hope for is a happy ending.
If I'm over, overreacting, then forgive me. I apologize. I'm not trying to blame anything on anybody.
What I would like for you to do.
We cannot unring the bell.
What I would like for you to do, if you have a question like this, call me, come in and, and I'll lay it out in front of, I'll show you all the engineered drawings I've got. I'll show you the letters from the A D Q. I will show you the bonding that the man's done. I will show you the studies that have been done, the drainage studies, the erosion studies. All these things have been done by qualified engineers and I, you know, I keep a record of them. And as these permits are extended, I, you know, I keep the permits in there, in there for.
So you feel like this ordinance is good, needs no revision?
The only thing, like I said, that, that I think that you could put on there that I think would get us in a lot of trouble is to say, uh, we reserve the right to, uh, refuse anybody because we don't like the project. And as a different hand, we'd say that, that we can't do that. It's kind of like the unsightly laws. You know, that, I don't know that I won't pull that trigger on anybody. But, uh, it, that's a good, good ordinance. It's holding people's feet to the fire. And if we do our job, Hunter, myself, the mayor, and we're gonna stay on top of it, that hopefully, again, hopefully, it'll have a happy ending. But we say the same thing, you know, like the forest hill, if things aren't there and cleaned off phase two of Forest Hills and then gone bankrupt, you know, what could you do? We hope that doesn't happen.
I mean, I, if you guys feel comfortable with it, then that's fine. I mean, I just, over the last several months, there's been a lot of heated conversations about.
And I went to the, to that this way. I feel comfortable with it. Do I like it? No. But I, I.
You're talking about the project, not the ordinance.
I live and die by, by ordinances. And I'm, I enforce it, and I'm, I enforce it for the, but I can't go over and above it because that gets the city.
I agree. I, I understand that. I'm just asking if there's anything we need to do to this ordinance.
No. And again, if, if we had a conceptual drawing, I told the mayor today, if we had a conceptual drawing of that mountain and had a western river up there, we would be here and meet many. But there, there's nothing there. There is, there's nothing there that they can put their finger on. It is, it's, it's hope that we have a, a good ending to a project in the middle of our town.
Well, you understand, we've been worried about that hope several times.
Exactly. And, and I have to step back, uh, you know, and, and just like you said, a little while ago, we don't want another one of those things that was said in one. I have to step back and say, that's not mine. This one is mine. I can't do a thing about that. Am I hoping for the same result? Yeah, and I, I think I'm sitting alive at the end of the tunnel for that. And I keep hoping that it is, but like I said, I can't push it, I can't pull it. If it was annexed, I would be on it in art, but it's not.
Okay, two things. One, you talked about there's a contour on top of the hill. I'm assuming we're talking about the dirt ice line behind Kerry Davis Lot?
Yeah.
Seventy-one hill.
Yeah.
Um, it says in here that there was a contour. You talked about the top of the mountain coming off. We didn't know about that originally.
Well.
Contour's changed.
Well, the contour, uh, is, if you, it's kind of like profiled, the mountain. If you look, if you were looking at that thing from the west, look because the east, it shows you where the, the finish line on it is.
Okay. Well, this section ten C, you just talked about time limit. This is, uh, the hundred dollar fee to, for a grading plan. And if the grading agreement can be reapprised with no major revisions, then the fee is not required. I was making, so if we have major revisions, then obvious, I guess, next time it's permits up, then we'll be charging another hundred.
He pays for the permit, he's found it is reviving.
Well, unless there's no major revisions.
Well, ju- just renew the permit, we do charge him for the permit. But we don't recharge the, the grading and all that, but. And the bonding, the bonding carries forward too, yeah.
Okay. And then you talk about bonding, so in eight years, will that just stand there with a bunch of dirt and stuff on the side of the hill? Is there, what's, is there enough teeth in this so we don't have to have another strip mile on the side of the hill? Any of the bonding?
We've got a hundred thousand dollar bond on it. Uh, you know, at some point, if he pulled out and says, you know, I'm bankrupt, I can't do any more, then we would recall the bond and then we would get somebody to replace the mountain and, and plant the seed and things like that. Would we be able to bring it back to original? No, God could do that.
God could do it, but we could, no, hundred thousand dollars, though. I mean, that doesn't, we couldn't fix it for that, did we?
Not really, but again, you know, I, this hundred thousand dollar bond, it, I would have written that different.
How do we do, is all the bonding in here?
Uh.
On the amounts, how do we determine it?
It's a minimum of a hundred thousand dollar bond. The way I would have worded that, Daniel, I would have, I would have bonded it as, uh, as figured on the overall, uh, cost of the project. If that was a three million dollar project, then I would have bonded it for a heck of a lot more than, than a hundred thousand dollars. But if it's a, a fifty thousand dollar project, I wouldn't put a hundred thousand dollar bond on it. But, but with this ordinance, the minimum is a hundred thousand dollars. You know, we ran into that with Andy, Andy Longing. And we run with, with that with another company that was wanting.
Well, I think on that, you know, I mean, you know, that's worth thinking about, in my opinion. The, you know, Andy Angeloni, we can fix whatever's on his lot for a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know.
You're gonna take a whole side of a mountain down. It's gonna take a lot of decent.
And I think it should, like I said, I think it should be based on the, the overall cost of the project. And if somebody comes in and says, I'm gonna break this mountain down, and I said, I'm gonna, we're gonna do this, that, and the other, it's gonna be three million dollars. Well, it's gonna, the bonding's gonna be a whole lot more than a hundred thousand dollars.
Which goes back to where I started. An engineered plan, conceptual, tell you this is a three million dollar project or whatever. I mean, I could draw a conceptual plan on a piece of paper.
Again, we did have that engineered plan.
On, he has engineered on the dirt. So.
I mean, I want it.
Yeah, he, that, that he has. And then, and maybe that's good for you guys to ask. I don't want to copy that. This is a discussion that the three of us had and, and maybe more than once, since, since Hunter's come in and then he gives new eyes to the block. If anything needed to be fixed on this one, again, I wasn't asked, but throw it in, that's something that ought to be looked at, purge out. And, I mean, it just says, it says determined by the building department, but there ought to be something that they use to determine, like you said.
And again, and I know the seventy-one thing is not our deal, we can't fix it, we can't control it. But if it were, a hundred thousand dollars would be tough.
But for example, our, our street bond, if, uh, if somebody was gonna go, when Stevens redid the well up, up on Mount Harmon. The way we figure our street bond is, uh, Don E. went up there and he measured from highway ten up to the well. And then he got a price on what it would cost to completely replace that road in that distance. Well, whatever that cost was, he based his bond off that price. Now, that shouldn't, if, if it had only gone up to the, to the school, shouldn't have the same bond. It should be based on the price of the project.
Well, and so generally that bond covers road repair, I assume, except in this case, that's state highway.
Yeah, yeah, you can't guarantee state highway, that's fine. But like I said, that's, that's the way I get our, we get our street bond, how we figure the price on that. And this should be figured the same way instead of.
I mean, if he was going out the other side over there on Denver Street.
Yeah.
And totally destroyed Denver Street, a hundred thousand wouldn't get our street fixed. Much less.
But yeah, that, I think we need, if we did anything to this ordinance would be to make the bonding on a sliding scale, uh, based on the cost of the project.
It ought to be a percentage of the project.
Pardon?
It ought to be a percentage of the project.
Yeah.
If it's two hundred thousand dollar project, it ought to be a hundred thousand dollars. It ought to be fifty percent of it.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, whatever.
It's gonna be halfway through, if you can't finish it, what about, you guys have to finish it, so.
Whatever, you know, whatever y'all can load with.
Three million dollar project, you get through that on half of it. That's what you do.
But what determines the value of the project? I mean, is it?
Cost.
Cost of living on the dirt.
I would think it'd be a cost of bringing it to completion. Excuse me.
I think it'd cost to bring it to completion?
Yes.
Well, here's the problem we got with the whole thing with Gitgo, and I'm quite certain other ordinance we've had probably touched on this, and they're probably all wrong. We got an engineered plan for the dirt work on the hill, correct?
Yeah.
Why would we ever give a permit for somebody to move dirt only inside the city limits? I think that's what we're trying to avoid from Gitgo.
That's my thought.
Well, we should have where he's going, they put houses, a strip mall, parties. Why won't you say, well, you wanna move one dirt off the hill? Here you go.
This is just an eruptive, that's what this, that's all this does.
You attach what he's suggesting. I mean, I think you should. I think you should have something to go.
Well, we were trying to get around all these, we were around dirt for a little bit. And so, the fact that we even started one is our fault for even allowing the ordinance to be allowed. You shouldn't be allowed to have dirt. I mean. I mean, Coler wants to do it out here, that's out of the city limits, that's fine, but drop the middle of town, look like a dirt quarry, I mean, it doesn't make any sense why we need to allow it.
Yeah. We can tell the developer to do the dirt, I don't know. You got to move some.
Well, I don't, I mean, so, so my original statement, I, I understand if you're gonna move dirt, fine, move the dirt, dig the whole hill down, but produce an engineered plan of what's gonna be there when it's open.
But you gotta have that.
If you're building Target, you gotta have it open, to your point. Somebody came up there and said, we're gonna build this whole big fancy shopping center, and Best Buy and Target and all these things, and a hundred foot tall brick wall, here it is, that's what we're gonna build when the mountain's through.
But it was a conceptual plan, it wasn't, it wasn't-
We don't even have that.
Yeah, we didn't.
I mean, if, if, I wanna see a permitted, like if he came in here and said, you know, I guess to Doug's point, if somebody came in here on a flat piece of ground and said, Sonny, I'm gonna build Western Sizzle, what I gotta do? You know, you and Stewart are gonna say, here's all the, these requirements, blah, blah, blah. There you go. Have that. I'd like to see the same thing relative to somebody digging the hillside off, you know.
But once again, we have that.
You need to add what you're, what you're saying, you need to make that.
Yes.
You have this for dirt, you need another one to tell him.
I would attach it to this.
I know, that's what, I, absolutely.
I mean, I understand somebody's win, but I, I, surely he didn't just buy that piece of property on the side of the hill to move dirt around and just make little steps and trees laying across the- I understand, an engineered plan of how we're gonna tear a center, relax.
There is a conceptual, I've seen it, it's not engineered by any stretch of the imagination.
I don't want an engineered-
There's a conceptual, but you gotta, but you gotta acquire it with something.
You need an engineer's conceptual drawing, that's an artist-
And you, you need another one to tell him, not him, the next guy, or him on the next project.
Well, I mean, I don't-
You need an ordinance, all right? You need an ordinance demanding that.
Yeah, and maybe I'm using the wrong word, engineering, but you know what I'm saying.
If a subdivision, is this right? If some, if somebody wants to come in and build a subdivision on a, relatively flat piece of property, they have to have this, this, because they're gonna move some dirt, and then they also, because they're here to get approved subdivision, they're also gonna present for an engineered on the buildings.
Or they're gonna give you a plat, they're gonna give you a plat, showing the layout of the lots.
Yeah, but what we don't have is some-
What I'm saying is, in the absence of that second plat and approval, we're not even gonna approve you to move the dirt. Engineered or whatever.
You need to-
I mean, if we're wanting to avoid having a bunch of dirt on every hill in town and dirt-
So you don't, you don't, so you need to fix this to not allow permit to-
What do we have in our commercial guidelines for our buildings?
Well, the commercial guidelines will take, take over, you know, once he gets, is everything ready and he starts to build a building, then the commercial guidelines come in and say, this has got to be this tall, this wide, it's got to have brick in the front, it's got to do this, that, right, the commercial guidelines come in.
So could you not, just to add a section to this, I mean, we got it, it says grading plan specifications. Could you not add a section that just defines what your, your planned property use is for, for doing that grade?
That, that's what he, I think that's what he was suggesting right off.
He wouldn't need an entire ordinance, he would just need to add to a section saying, that I'm gonna be grading for this particular, whether it's a housing division, a, a strip mall, or whatever.
Right. And, and Mr. Burton did do that. We have got the conceptual plan of what he wants to do when this is all done, and, you know, then, and that's conceptual, like again, that's an artist rendition, and, but then we have the engineered drawings of the contours of the hills, the, the height, the width, and all that. Then we have the drainage studies that's required, we have environmental studies from the ADQ and letters from them approving it. And so, like, he has, uh, Mr. Bricksy, Chad Bricksy took his ordinance, and he went through there line by line and made sure that Burton had touched every line on there.
So he's proposing to be done by August of this year?
That was estimated end of it, Ralph, you know, like I said, depending on what it looks like at that point.
The what? The dirt or the whole thing?
The dirt or dirt work. Because that's all rolling in account.
Yeah.
The permit is six months.
That's correct.
Yeah.
August, Doug, come back and read us-
And if he don't, then he can come back and apply, reapply into the city at any time, at, at that time, if you're not satisfied, I'm not issuing you a permit.
Starting with Seth, Seth would come, start at the, the highway, and he made a straight back to make sure that's where, you know, his cut was, according to the plans and, and all that, and Hunter's doing that now. And so, like I said, he is probably under the microscope in it more than any other building this, this city has ever been.
I will point out that we had to make it clear to Mr. Burton, and if he was here, I mean, he's aware of it, we had to make it clear to him that he had a little dis, little disagreement that ADQ, because ADQ is aware of this project and does regular inspections, anything that we asked of him, he didn't have to comply with. And I, and I said, no, but, I didn't ask to turn it, I said, that would be incorrect. Just because ADQ says this, you says this, you're in the city, so-
We're basically partnering with ADQ, they-
They're above and beyond our expectations, if you will, but there are a few things that it's about silencing stuff.
I mean, again, you know, I'm saying, I, I don't know, I mean, maybe the point's been made, I assume you're going to circle, but tractor supply came to town and said, I'm going to build this building, here you go, it's what I'm gonna build, and I'm gonna put it right there, what's the, what are the fees and blah, blah, blah. And by the way, we have to move half the mountain over there, over here.
Well, practice by-
But they started with, I'm gonna build something.
Practice by, two sets of plan, one for the grading and, and dirt work, and then one for the building. You know, with Burton, he doesn't have a building design, you know, to give us that, but he got this part.
That's the scary part to me.
It is, but, but that's true with any property.
Yes, ma'am.
As a homeowner, uh, through Nineteen Petway Circle, which is just due east of this excavation, it concerns me what it might do, you know, initial impact on our property then, if we're left with that, you know, baby wound over there. I appreciate the discussion tonight, it's been helpful, Sonny has spoken with me on the phone about it, has had, uh, Councilman McDaniel in town. I appreciate it, with shed light on it, helps me understand a little better, but I still feel anxious about, um, what is happening with it.
Well, for whatever it's worth, I saw that Mr. Ish left up on Mount Harmon, hasn't hurt my property values, mine, like, it's kicking the cess for some stupid reason, way away out. We've got a pond that doesn't hold water, a, a fair amount of land where all the trees were wiped out, we thank Mr. Ish for that every day if we could, but, uh, so, hopefully it doesn't happen here.
And hopefully, one of these days, if we get property, it's gonna be a-
Hopefully, it's not those little, pretty stupid houses that we gave approval to, you can put on the two of those, that's what I tried to fight against, R seven or whatever we call them.
And I have to say, somebody became from the Bronx of Houston thirteen years ago, a mountain, it is a pretty precious-
Yes, I am, thank you.
So I reached my page.
Good discussion, anything else?
Else we can deal with this?
Nothing. I think you discussed that for a discussion, correct? Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate y'all staying all positive out, for sure, all over.
Uh, number four, Mr. Powell's not here this evening, he asked for this to be placed on. This kind of goes in conjunction with number five also. Would they promise that this will be a very short session, if you allow it? I would ask the council or someone, I would ask to go into executive session to discuss, uh, hiring of the new street director.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, we're most excited. I promise you, it will not last two hours, like the last one.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
For Daniel?
Yes.
If you're interested?
Yes.
I'm having a question for it.
Well, thank you.
Did you see the bird play?
Yeah, I'm gonna go. I'll just go, and that one, you're only gonna go that long.
Did you see the bird with the layer being added?
No, not me.
Oh, she took the truck.
I'm only going to play like a great-
Those are the ones that are really important. I'm gonna go there or something. I got one in. I'm back by ten, we can get anything.
I'm still thinking about that. I'm just seeing who's on.
No.
Sure. I was still going to ask.
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm curious.
No, no.
I was a-
Is Mark gonna fly in the hall?
Oh, my gosh, I really have to.
It was twenty, uh, I, I heard one time, I, uh, had an accident in college.
It's great.
That's not what you say. I mean, that's not what you say.
Down Texas, it's a model, it's got big dreams.
Right near Dallas.
That was a, that was a two hour vacation session. That was really beautiful.
Oh, how are you?
Yeah, they were saying, it was maybe this thing.
Well, I'm like, that's gonna be another.
It's on there, it's on the, you know, they're gonna show me.
Okay.
I'm waiting to look at it.
Well, I, I would-
So, that's like-
I'm gonna go there every morning.
Well, game's on, ten minutes.
But it's right for half.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we-
I'm gonna ask them to ask.
Oh, we were gonna take a hand in it.
But it's right for half.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we-
I'm gonna ask them to ask.
Oh, we were gonna take a hand in it.
Well, we were gonna take a hand in it.
Oh, we were gonna take a hand in it.
Oh, we were gonna take a hand in it.
But it's right for half.
Yeah.
We would be here.
Yeah, the meeting was like, we played back in ninety.
All of it, no, it didn't.
Yeah, there was nothing.
I was in California, when it had something in Los Angeles about that game, I was right there, I just hooked him in the stake.
I was in two years.
All the good figures.
All the good figures.
So, I was walking, I was walking.
So, I was walking.
Well, there's a London, and there's a Palestine, and there's Paris, they're all over.
So, when I was in K, you know, you went to school.
Really?
I went to school.
I was in, and you were as well.
I don't want to, I don't want to.
And then I went to visit students, and I, I was like, I was like, I was crossing
the line.
I used to go to the factory.
So, I was really, I was done.
But so, it was, I was kind of an anchor, I was a joint manager.
And it was, I was like, I was like, I was like, I'm not.
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 Scott, you're working on it?
Yeah, sure.
Well, there's a London, and there's a Palestine, and there's Paris, they're all over.
So, when I was in K, you know, you-
Okay.
Really?
You went to school.
I went to school.
And I was in, and you were as well in that.
I don't want to, I don't want to.
And then I went and visited students, and I, I was like, I was like, I was like,
I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like,
I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like,
I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like,
I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like,
I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like,
I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like,
I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, Handcuffs, handcuffs. Make it hurt, make it hurt.
Do it.
I'm not sure we're gonna win.
And I did tell mom. I thought she.
They're still in her ass.
I was bad.
I wrote those lists for like years.
We need to be more. And make. That I don't.
Those are.
Those are the. I would.
They've never.
Why? She has those. I, I told her, I was like, I was. My parents on this field. You couldn't pay me to. Hard time now. Now. We don't have.
You're being pulled thirty-six foot. Fifty.
We. Access at.
I don't have a problem.
I was like, yes.
So, I mean, they won't be.
There are buildings. There's second. Where you have a.
Absolutely.
Where it's like, you guys, you guys, you have this much property, you guys. And I told. I, as we. I like. Like this property. We can. Well, I'm just. Working where I. I, I'm. Getting it. I said, now, just wait until. I said, people, I said, you had to. What's for you? There's water. Is that your return? I said.
How many can only have so many ounces?
Oh, yeah. He's. And. Grandma. She's still close to the, the, the. How. Your is just. It's nice, she's still not. You know, like, so. Yes. Because no, they could've done each other, you take that. I was like, I love. And she's. If she. I was like. Do something. Yeah.
We're not.
Yeah, you can't. I mean, you can't. And. Please enlighten. I, I'm. But you can. I mean, I said. Although I went back there and took a picture. Yeah. No, but I'll tell you, you should tell her. Tell me. Like, tell me it's specific.
I thought the same thing.
St. Eulius. Eulius. This drive me nuts, I had to say.
Yes, like, I'm like. You can't.
That'll hear. Same man changed.
So he's a veteran.
Because, you know, he left college and threw away a free education to come home for. And now he's gone. I can't.
Hey, all we're at the morning.
Maybe at least paying rent then.
I.
Like, what?
My son has. You. Yes. Yes. Today was the first time I would decide. So I was just like, went, I went. I went in there and I was like.
Well.
And how far?
It's a tragedy.
Good.
Here's the reason why. He's for one.
There's a.
Everybody's dancing because.
But.
A lot of it's. That's not.
I'm always.
It's a. A tragedy. And it actually draws us that we're.
Yeah.
So.
Now I just. In the middle of summer.
To work.
Like.
Right that I. So if I had any. These are ridiculous. Any one of three or four. We knew when we were.
Been to Walons yet?
Down Street.
Been to Walons yet?
You know, play down.
It's a charity barista restaurant. It's right next to. It's up to me. It's got a mix. It's not that. Yeah. Girls from Tuckers. And some of the beer. I think they give you. Be like, no. Like, well, they have some sandwiches and stuff.
No, they have. Pasta. Like, a jam. Have a. Like, sports. Yeah, so, um, I went, they had those. Has to. Uh, we. Were. Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
He has a great.
And, um.
I was. That was everybody.
Yeah.
No way.
That's great. We're typing. This is where.
Oh, it's.
Well, we went by their.
Oh, yeah, it was past. That's.
Oh, is it? Losing. Yeah, that's my first.
This is a color.
Oh, I was scared.
Yeah.
Was somewhere. Is that right?
Shut up, that's not.
That's what I was.
I had a.
You are. I was. This is my. Well, this is a distribution. Unfortunately. You can see it.
Last week, turns out all you have is towels and now it's there. There were people everywhere in there. I always like to go on Rogers Tour. So. Yes. And track some places. Yes.
So that's. We're running.
Yeah.
So.
Sir. I wish I could pay it twice since I'm. Yeah.
As soon as.
Actually, I never.
It's. So.
No. Yeah, I'm. Yeah, who is? Who is? That's. Catered. Oh, my.
No, only if I was. He's better than.
I have. His affirmation. Where everything's. Yeah, they're very. Something. Because I'm stressed. I'm ready.
This is.
But I'm. Only off. About you, huh?
You're a girl. Billy.
I'll have to come.
I mean, there are.
Trying to.
Four tables I went to. I had a point.
Well. So they get sent away, I guess.
Unfortunately.
I'm gonna take my.
I told me he's just going. I told him he's just going. That's.
My daughter friends. Oh, yeah.
There is. Some. We're.
You're great.
When you get. It's.
Black bread.
Yeah, she was. They have.
She was.
Taking from it. But he's like walking around.
And then there you get.
She was.
There's some.
And fell down. Just had a. She was like, she was bringing away. She's shaking. She's like. Praying. Such a. And he. She would watch. I, she was cheering on. She was cheering. Hi. Yeah, see if she would chase after. It's true. She wondered what did we. What did we.
She's not very social.
It was funny. It's like.
John. It's two.
This is. This is. Everything. From.
Okay, I'll. Then I get. I see. Someone. Yeah.
This is. And. And.
Are you. Oh, my.
FaceTime.
Yeah. Free. God. Thanks. Thanks. Don't. How. Look, hard work for you. And you know. Start making press. Very early. They got news about. Newspaper. No. They're. They don't. I think. I have Twitter. Pretty. I don't.
I said that one little bit. From that one. Already cleared.
I'm like, tell me what.
No, yeah.
I said.
What's.
You're. The. City. Denver's on. The first. First. We.
First. I mean. Seven. I mean. I'm all. She.
With.
Yeah.
Weekend. Sorry. I was wrong. I did.
And so also.
Players. The. Honey.
I do. I do all the things. I do not. No. All hours. It was.
And.
He is.
Well, it's.
Of course.
Right. As a. She.
People.
No, it's.
There.
It's about. You.
My. It's. It's. It's.
Yeah. There. For.
The.
It's. Now. All. Gas. You're. Parents.
Oh, dear.
Sorry.
Yeah.
That's. John.
We're just.
In general.
How does it feel?
You know.
He's so much. Yeah, they just. It doesn't.
These are. Saying. But I don't think.
They're following. Not even here. So our poor husband.
Yeah.
That's how my, that's how my mother was like. That's her. She was. Her husband. I mean, it's still. Yeah. They started. Yeah.
Great.
I was like, dry. Dry.
You could always.
She was, she was talking about. Yeah.
She was.
Yes. Yes. And I was like, and I'm someone there. Go there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Each part of every night.
I saw.
Started. You have. Really have. So. They have it all. Has some. So.
We. Ready. Well, it's.
So I just. But if they give us stuff like.
Well, when. Sorry. What? Was it? Cool. I mean. Cool. So. Which like. It's.
They might listen to that. I'll see.
Yeah. Yeah.
You said. Just ready. Start next year.
That's. Yeah.
They were. For. Yeah. Could you post them on.
All states. And I want to. And I want to. Just. Which. They. Gets to. Be. Of course. Things.
So. It's. And. I. Have. I. I. It's. Measured. I started. But I. That's.
There's. Problem.
You know, but it's.
There's.
I don't. So I had. Yes.
A.
Here's this one. Here's this. Like the.
Oh. Take. My wife.
I'm. Oh, oh. Just saying.
Yeah.
You want to. Tell her. I'm just. Got. Work. So. One of them. Why do you arrest them? It's just. Kind of. Your. You know. I love that. That is. Well. That's. Sexually. How. It's like she's. Yeah. And they don't. It's a. Okay, that's. So it's like, how do we get them?
Trial party. How we do that?
Wait here, you're running.
I don't know.
Well, I like that.
I'm like, you still.
Whatever. Yeah.
Sixteen to four. They don't.
Wick. Eighteen to six.
Eighteen to six. Twenty-one to six. They don't. Twenty-one to six. They don't.
Yeah.
Twenty-one to eight.
Players win. Players. I knew if they'd start shooting ball. What's his score?
Twenty-one to eight.
Do you worry about it?
I will. I will. Twenty-three to eight. We're.
Yes.
Every time somebody pauses.
Kelly Enders used to. It yelled.
No, we. Don't be.
Very good.
Well, he.
Which is the Bulldogs slash.
How do you know?
He ran outside.
What do we do?
That's T R.
You asked.
What about the timeframe? Long, just so they know.
Long time. Years. About now the COVID happened, of course, just backed up. And a jury trial, a little jury trial over a year. So you've got two years worth of criminal trials to take custody of, or finish seven trials. So I may not be the attorney here when it's taken down to trial, which that is in 2022. And I'm sorry, I'm talking to the other unit, because on school perspective, it would be how'd you go with it?
Okay, so all that being said, does the, this people clerk cut down until they could see the lake for their house?
So we picked it up together?
Yeah.
And they didn't really realize that they weren't supposed to do that, obviously? They didn't ask permission from anybody? They just cut trees? They showing remorse when we contacted them, sorry, why we didn't do that? What can we do to help? Offer any kind of peace offering first, or no?
Tammy, you might, you might come to the microphone. Tammy just made contact with the individual, I had not. That was the first concern I had, and I know game, I-
I'm going somewhere with this, so it's been the largest.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so, so I didn't, I didn't initially go out there to speak to the people that live there. I went out there because I wanted to see with my own eyes where 389 feet. You can tell me 389 feet, but I gotta walk it off. I better roll it out, I better see it. So I'm out there with my measuring mill, I go from the water's edge to 292 feet. And I felt like I was encroaching on their backyard. Really encroaching, way further than I ever thought.
Right.
And I still liked 100 feet. So I'm, I'm standing there just looking at all the trees that were cut down, that I were, that I wasn't even counting. Now, before that, I had made a, I had made a police report. They, Joe here had handed over to the Arkansas Department of Agriculture. He had made contact with the lady, well, she instantly told him, oh, we didn't know exactly where our property lines were, and, and we're sorry, and we had somebody come out here and cut this, uh, to help us clean up. But he just decided to go on down towards the lake for me. And I know what this looks like, I, I, you know, I, I know what this looks like, and I'm like, um, and my head, I'm like, well, yeah, I see your balcony, and now you see my lake.
Right.
You know? So anyway, uh, long story short, um, he told, he told her that I had contacted, um, Sharon's to find out the biggest trees I can buy, 25 of them, because that's what my guys had come stumps. Well, that's another story, so don't let me forget to tell that part.
Okay.
Um, so I called Sharon's, I got a price on the biggest oak trees I could buy and planted, because that's gonna be some awful rough digging out there. And it was gonna be like 10,400 and blah, 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 some change, which shocked me, but anyway. So he, that's what he had told her, was she, that we had gotten the price for. She said she was willing to pay $3,000. That was, that was in between them, so, so now back up, that was, that happened first. So then I'm out there wanting to know, just in my head, where, where I'm going. So he, the agriculture, Department of Agriculture officer, he said that we could, that he, as far as he was concerned, his part in the game was, um, marketable timber process. So as I was out there looking, at first, we thought our property might only go to an old fence line in the, in the middle of all this. Well, it doesn't. It goes way up into her backyard. First of all, she should have known where her property line was.
Right.
Um-
They do one bit, they're, they're doing one bit, correct?
Yeah, so-
They have it.
Yeah.
Very recent.
Yes. And so, um, I got, I called Rixie because, um, same is in the process of getting all that, but it's in city limits, and that's the reason our guys didn't take it on.
Right.
Is because it's not in the city limits yet. And so, um, I was, like I said, I was standing there still in shock because Mr. Bedman, um, had not counted all the trees that were cut up as far as I was into the property. Like I said, I felt like I was still encroaching, and I still had 100 feet to go. So, um, she came down there and, and she shot her line, and I'm sure y'all about to read what a bad woman I am, and how I like my, my survey in her face and whatever. Oh, I didn't, but whatever. Um, did say, he said, I mean, she said, she said, whatever. Um, I'm just devastated that somebody can just think, that they can say, oops, I'm sorry, no harm, no foul.
Right.
And we're not gonna, we're not gonna do anything about it. And I even told her that day, I said, I'm not trying to keep you off of this property. This is public property, this is what it's here for.
Sure.
It's for enjoyment for everybody, not just one person. I said, what if everybody else around this lake, and there's lots of houses around the lake decided that they wanted a view? We wouldn't have a nature trail. And really, I'm not even concerned about the timber process, really. I mean, sure, I want to get what we can get, but, I mean, I'm, the natural beauty and the scenic beauty of everybody else that goes out there, I said, now, what you've done is you've opened up a, a trail into your backyard, essentially. I said, because Sally, Joe, Leroy, somebody, whoever's out on the trails is gonna say, well, what about Greenwood's doing now? We're just gonna take off up here and see what they're doing. I said, well, that just invites an entry of guard. And then she said something about the gate. I said, well, I wouldn't live out here with that gate unlocked, so lock your gate. I said, you know, we had an understanding with the, with the gentleman, Mr. Boyens, that lived there, that if the Parks Department needed to use his gate or his property, he was good with that. Well, I just hadn't got around to asking these people, hey, we're the Parks Department, this is your property, but sometimes we need to get down here for whatever reason, build a boy scout pavilion or whatever. So then she twisted that around, as if to say that I, I told her to lock her gate because we weren't gonna play like we did with the other guy. That's not at all what I meant, because she was just saying she didn't want people. I said, well, lock the gate, there's no trespassing sign out there. Anyway, um, so, um, before all that came out in February or everything, I went back out there again because I was determined to find the markers. So I'm out there digging around with my shovel and my muck boots, looking for the markers. So I found two on the south side, couldn't find the ones on the north side. Wasn't gonna go that close to her house on the furthest one to the northeast. But anyway, so I called Rixie, I said, I found two markers, could you please go back out there and flag these markers? The mayor asked me if he could flag them ever fifty, uh, put a mark, a state under 50 feet, so the boundaries would be absolutely junk, and that's what he did. So here I am, I'm still just in shock, because when I went out there looking for the survey, um, markers, I also uncovered more stumps. I meant, did I send you the stumps?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so those, so some of those stumps had been covered in dirt and tried to burn. So I had to dig around with a shovel to find these marketable tree stumps, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Not to mention the ones that I didn't go up into their yard, because I wasn't actually sure that that, you know, I wanted to get the stakes at first. But, I mean, that's just covering up what they had done by deliberately putting dirt over them and tried to burn, you know, had tried to burn them and then put them in dirt. So anyway, it, it was a deliberate act, I mean, right? Okay, you're sorry, but we need to get, we need, we need more than $3,000, in my opinion. That's just my opinion, I just want, the Parks Commission just wanted your blessing on, to let my annual things, I mean, it's just-
I'm all for, obviously, looking into litigation, just unfortunately, the fact that he talked about it's gonna be a million years, I mean, there's a chance for some arbor day, we could have trees planted and already been grown by the time of which court.
Absolutely, we could, and I intend to, to try to buy some of the most fast-growing, evergreen trees and put it right in the property line.
Which I guess, we could do both still, we could re-plant and also-
We could, we could re-plant and add that to the list, I mean, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, we may not get the $10,000 worth of trees, but I wanted to know, for my own personal, I just wanted to know how much those trees were gonna cost. And, and the biggest trees that I could get, 30,000 big oak tree, about $500 apiece, you would take a few dollars and then planting, ended up giving $10,000, over $10,000. And that hurt my heart. And yes, we could probably get some pine trees that would fast grow, and like I said, I, I would like to buy some, some fast-growing trees, like a plant that would, that would, yeah, that would kind of cover the view quickly and just go on about our business. And I would, I would even like to put some type of fence, even if it's just a barbed wire fence to mark that property space, just not to block anybody out. Uh, like I told them, you know, it's a public space, we want you to go hiking, but I don't want, like I said, somebody on the trail just to wander off into her property.
Proceeds to both trails.
Both trails, the, I was on the other trail, the pictures that I sent to you.
Right.
The pictures that you, I, I believe you saw them the last time, that, um, I'm looking over here, but I've got another councilman over here, someone-
I would like for the least to kind of blend in with what's currently there for the tree.
Sure, sure.
You're gonna be much more likely to get something to grow with native, I mean, if it's something like spruce or something.
Well, I just want something fast-growing that I can get from Sharon's that's evergreen to put there as good.
Pine is probably gonna be your best bet.
Yeah. Just some good old yellow, yellow pine, or any pine.
A lot of pine, well, yeah, they're, they're pretty quick, yeah, and they're hardy.
Yeah.
They won't be growing some rough stuff anyway.
Yeah.
I would just, I, I said, I, I haven't read anything in the newspaper or any Facebook or any of that stuff. All I know is a text you sent me with some pictures that said, here's the stuff.
Well, you did ask questions, and that's the reason I did.
I was just wondering what the story was, if there was any kind of, I had no idea, let me donate to the Parks Fund and be able to do with it, whatever, I thought maybe we might have some kind of peace offering that way.
Just, just, just an offer to the, to the officer that was in front of her will do $3,000?
Well, like I said, I mean, we're gonna, we can still replant and still wait for litigation on, you don't worry, I just, if, if we have a leg to stand on, because unfortunately, things happen like this, and then us six guys end up in some courtroom somewhere with our heads spinning while we have no idea, we're just gonna write a check to somebody because we lost the case.
Well, I, I mean, this, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make all, I'm gonna make copies of all these pictures, and I, he will have a file, I'll have a file. So if it's you guys, or if it's the next, if it's another Parks Director, they will definitely know, know the mayor. But, I mean, you know, whatever, however long it takes.
Lock those on.
Lock those on, and I just want somebody, whoever's here, to say, okay, well, here's what happened. And we'll have our minutes from this meeting, we'll have, we'll have mine a folder, my folder.
There's no shit, there's no need for some sort of little, uh, shed or something in one of these areas that kind of, that she might have felt was out clear cut for something like a pavilion or a campsite or whatever, I mean, I'm just saying, it was up with you.
I, I, I don't know, um, somebody said something about a pavilion, but I think they're liking what's the price on the pavilion?
Probably, probably $25, $30,000 to a pavilion.
There's not a pavilion, it's a big, not a small pavilion.
Rock, there's not, I mean, it could be another one, I mean, it's, there's some, there's some woods in between, I mean, you-
It's a workout station or something, you know, like where you- I'm just trying to get something practical that we could do.
I, I thought that as well, I had to call that as well.
You mean the, because of this? No.
I, I just-
Yes, it-
The mayor wasn't a crime committed here.
Mm-hmm.
Can sure that not, it's a, it's a conversation, I think that's-
It's a trespass, all they can do is if you trespass on somebody, they get fined, they call cops, it doesn't help us.
It's not a destruction of the property.
That's what I'm thinking.
If you could give a prostitute a credit, yeah, but I highly doubt that you would be able to do that.
I mean, it's, it's a park, I mean, i- is it not a park? I mean, it's a city lake, but I mean, does our trail's not-
Yeah, with an established hockey trail, I would like to, that shows purpose.
I'm just asking. Because I would hate for somebody to think they could go to my other parks and just, well, in fact, this is kind of funny on sidebar, I've been around the mayor too long, but when I was talking to Sharon, telling the lady what I needed and why, she was like, she just kind of giggled, and I said, what, what? And she said, well, now I just know, I said, people always ask me where they can go cut wood, and they just-
Right.
Tell them we can go down to Greenwood and cut off their trail, I'm like, oh my gosh, no! Because she was, she was just kidding, but, you know, it's just the things that people will do, the things that they can just do and get by with it. And I just don't want anybody else around the lake to think they can just cut a gate and hole through the trail.
Now, if I was mistaken, some, all those properties, all my other property had frontage to the lake that they were originally sold.
That one didn't, I, I, I don't know, but the, the, her, her property line, as far as we, as far as the county goes, is very clear.
I guess the ones-
Like, we, all the way around the lake?
Yeah, probably, so-
The ones in the city limits.
I think, I think, I think-
I'm looking at you!
I believe that was a one, Marymont, I believe that all the way-
The ones that went all the way around, always, like, where Radder used to live, his land went down, and it was like a, a one-foot lake, I mean, but they all went down, and that, that was what the ceiling was, like frontage blocks.
Yeah, or Lakeview at least, yeah, I don't know, because we own technically, am I right?
I was gonna get that.
So many feet from water edge, and I, is that not right? Is that how that works?
I thought it's 300 feet.
300 feet.
From the water, which of course, water berry, so I guess we own different property.
Is that from the normal power?
But yeah, there's, this one, again, and-
You're not in control for that.
Yeah, well, we own, we own X amount, because you've been working all this, you've been doing that, so-
Well, I'd like to see the flats from that way, once we consider, I guess it's called Wakefield Estates 2, or whatever, but I've seen them before, they all go down to-
Yeah, you're, you're, uh, aunt, or, yeah, which was States, I think.
Yes, but E. Clements has somebody emailing around where, uh, Cuthbert, they live there.
But this one, unless there's, unless there was something replanted, this, this is where it can't go, absolutely not.
This is what is supposed to be annexed to the city limits. And I have the real survey of that, but Dr. would pass that around to the-
Tammy, would you tell them to have removed two pens?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, and the reason I couldn't find, I couldn't find the pens on the north side of the property, because they had been removed, so Rixie had to put those back.
You, you could drive out there and not be stalking, uh, you could drive by there to see, to see, if you'll stop at the gate, the gate is on her property, absolutely, as Tammy's pointed out, the, the bottom of the hill, the gate is on her property, and that's where our property, and there's a corner post, and there's the fence, that fence disappears.
But it's not, it's not far down the trail, I mean, it's not like you're gonna hike a mile, if, if you go to the boat and just take the trail.
But you can, if you, if you just pause on that harmony, it glances down that-
Yes.
You can see the flags.
Right.
You're not gonna be able to see them along.
And then, yeah, the poles coming in, you can also, you can also see them going back up the hill right behind her, if you will.
It's, it's not-
And this is her, uh, there's probably four, maybe three, four acres.
It's three, yeah, her, her property, that, her property, um, description specifically says 3.1 acres with no timber. And she just bought the property, so she, if she read anything about her property, it specifically said, no timber, I read. And timber means timber, that doesn't mean ten trees in your yard or something, or whatever.
So I think the question is, does council want to acknowledge commission, the Parks Commission is voting to pursue litigation? Does council, I would like, for me, and maybe for Mr. Andy, I'd speak for him, but don't want to speak for him, but a vote from, from council, one way or the other, if you're still have this litigation, to, to begin, no matter the length, is, is that something you want to consider?
Does the Parks Commission really have to have that?
I, I don't think they necessarily-
I would rather, because like I said, we're the ones that always end up cutting checks. Well, I would, if we're saying we don't want to pursue litigation.
I'm the one that said that before you, because I don't want, I've been here 32 years, about how many times have we done something, and also, council says, I don't know, I don't know.
Right, yes.
And maybe I don't know-
Absolutely, bring it up. I may want to pursue a good litigation.
Second, motion is second to pursue litigation.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
May I? I'm sorry. Is the litigation to pursue the amount, would, do you need that amount? So it's not really about the amount yet?
Right, whenever, whenever we get down, we figure the attorney, and they come around and say, hey, you pay $10,000, and I'll come back, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ten three?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Certors?
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Parrott, good.
He's got the next one, Alexa?
Ms. Parrott, we'll come back to fill you. You have a resolution?
Oh, I do have a resolution. I do have a resolution, I do have one of those, thank you. Um, it is about the same property, it is, um, to proceed with, um, the, I turned in a grant to RDOT, for an RTP grant, to restore the old Iron Bridge at the lake, and I didn't get it, I was turned down, because the mayor got scurrying with their things, I was like, but anyway, whatever. And they got another one in front of me, again, so I'm up there, but, um, I'm gonna apply again, because this time I'm going to talk to some of the girls at Bucadini, and they're gonna kind of help me go through it and kind of clean it up a little bit, that was my first time, but anyway, um, so I'm gonna throw it back at them, and, and then just give your blessing on doing that.
Okay, good.
Motion two, second.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel? Lester?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you, Tammy. I'm gonna have to back up here, ready, because I, forgive me, I actually skipped, uh, we went into a different session on County combination four or five, but I'm technically removing number five from the, the-
You're just, you're just tabling.
Tabling, yeah.
But that, for our motion or not?
Um, to-
Do you want to just get it? Mr. Henry?
To remove.
To table something, or withdraw it, or what?
I'm tabling-
Saturday schedule?
Saturday schedule.
Withdraw it.
Good job.
Withdraw it.
Okay, thank you. Parker reports, questions from council? I'm saying, I'm going in here.
I had a question, uh, from a citizen about this widening Mount Harmony Road, we can discuss that at one time.
Mm-hmm.
What, where are we at with that?
It is in the budget to, to do it, unfortunately, some near some interesting news for you. Uh, we budgeted, I believe, $250,000, and that was based on a, I won't call it an estimate, what we, on the, what's the, what's the software that we?
Street scan.
Street scan, we, when I say Dennis looked at that and, and kind of tried to get a figure to put in the budget for that, and it was, some of it was brought, gained from that street scan. Uh, we then asked Mr. Shores to do the engineering on it, I don't have it on, I don't have it here with me, but it is, there's, there's two different options, one was to, uh, build two new lanes, the great, anyway, I'll just cut to the chase, it's $1.5 million. Now, I don't, I personally, and I, and I asked Dennis to check this before he left, and I don't know if he got an opportunity to talk to Jeremy about it, but I think there was a, and, and I may be way off here, I'm not an engineer, as you know, but it looked really odd, it looked like there was a $400,000 kind of mistake, if you will, and, and that may be wrong, I, I'm hoping it is, even if that, it's still a million dollars. Uh, so, we have, it's on, it's in a budget to, it's, it's a project, but I'm, I'm gonna get back with Mr. Shores and see if that's really what that means. The idea was to, uh, and what I described to you before, was to widen, or actually add, excuse me, add another lane to the existing two lanes that are there, creating a turn lane just from Mount Harmony, I mean, I'm sorry, from, actually, that's already there, you turn on Mount Harmony, it's there up to the, uh, apartments.
Yeah.
Or, or, yeah, or to the turn lane, or first to the bus route.
Yeah.
It's there.
No, it's not from the bus route.
I'm sorry, to the apartments, the storage.
Yeah.
Not even to the storage.
Huh?
Not even to the storage.
Just to the apartments, okay, just to the apartments, go ahead, you got something?
Yeah, I do, um, it's 300,000, 290,400.
What we budgeted, okay, okay.
But when we talked about it, Dennis and I, remember, we made a decision that we're not gonna budget total projects, and it's gonna be multiple years. So the question I had with Dennis is, is this gonna be all this year? How much of the money should we budget for what the cost will be in 2021? So we don't-
Oh, so he don't wanna give you?
Yeah, and I'll go back and revisit that with Dennis, but this would be the engineering costs and some of the 400,000.
Only?
Only, for this year.
Okay, that's good, I mean, it's not good, but it, it makes sense.
Yeah, there's no-
Little communication gap between Dennis and I, yeah, okay, my, my intention, as an idea that happening, and then I called Jeremy, and he said, yeah, it looks like it makes sense to me, let's, let's look at it, let's, let's put some numbers to it. The idea was that we, if we, if we did it, that we do it ASAP, and not take forever to do it, you don't want, I mean, it's already horrendous, if you jam it up with construction lasting a year or two years, then you're, I'm looking for another job, probably, to say the least, so, uh, so that, but that makes sense. So I will get back with Mr. Shores and see what that is, there were, the, the two options were not that much different, one was, and, and by the way, this was supposedly, because he, Jeremy asked me, he said, you don't wanna just build another lane to link the two like they are, do you? And I said, not necessarily, but it can cost, well, let's look and see what it costs. So I don't really have a cost of adding another lane to an existing two-lane road, but, but the idea was to, to continue on like it is, like you said, from the light, to the, only to the, uh-
First set of apartments.
First set of apartments, up to the, uh, East Point entrance.
Right. It needs just a third lane-
Correct.
Towards the sidewalk, there's plenty of room. And then the middle lane just becomes a turn lane for that school traffic.
Yes.
And I, I've sit in that for 30 minutes from the stoplight to my house, and it's about 400 yards before, I, but I, I don't mind, and I understand why it's plugged up. But the problem again is to Public Works, or Water, or any ambulance or something, and then also you'll get, some folks will just get out and take off, and just hope nobody's coming down there going all around Mount Harmony, then it gets real hairy up there, but, Tim, there's obviously traffic issues all over town, I'm for sure, but at least through the middle of town, we have that middle turn lane where, like tonight, at 4:30, Hamilton right through the middle, everybody, man, just around.
I think the chief has witnessed exactly what you're talking about, about people deciding they're gonna make a road somewhere.
And so, but if you sit there long enough, you know that no one's coming down the hill between 2:35 and 2:55, so let's say some guy like me, I know I can go through there, and so I'll call my, well, I would say, do they have my driveway blocked? He'll say, no, I'm gonna be able to get in my driveway, and I know no one's coming till school lets out, but it's a mess, so.
Everybody has it approved.
Now, then what you get is people going around Laurel and looking back around, and then they start stacking up on the other side, and so they're gonna be able to go to school first, so the folks facing uphill will wait even longer, uh, and then I'll be going around to Clark's Chapel and around, and then go past the East Point entrance and turn my left signal on, and just stand there, and it's complete gridlock, it's pretty funny, we won't just see it, because the folk will come out of the school and just wait behind me, because everybody blocks, everybody's probably, so I just sit there my way. It's interesting.
So to answer your question, we are nowhere with it, other than just waiting to get information, okay? That makes sense. Anything else for, for any of the departments? Nobody? Anybody? Move to council forum?
Very partially adjourned.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Let's get that date on score.
47, 37.
Mayor? I, when, when do they, when do they start with, uh?
47, 37, better?
Yeah, I'll do the thing.